In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cell phones and rise for the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
On to 4.0 presentation. We have our initial 2022-2023 budget. I'll pass it over to Jamie Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Sage. Today kicks off our 2022-23 budget season. Every year, it feels like it comes fast, and I can't believe it's another year. So here we are. Today is our first work session out of a series of three work sessions that will culminate in mid-April of approval of a total budget to go to the voters in May. Tonight's agenda is our review of the operations and maintenance, transportation, employee benefits, and debt service budgets. These are by no means final versions of these sections of the budget. There are several things that still will transpire over the next few months, both on the expenditure and revenue side before we finalize the budget. So I'm going to go a little out of order tonight. We have Judy Feldmeyer, our Director of Transportation, here with us to discuss the transportation budget. We have Michael Bernariski, our Director of Facilities, to discuss the operations and maintenance budget. But I'm going to have transportation be presented first because Judy has a family obligation. So we'll have her present, and if you have any questions on that portion of the budget, we'll ask them, and then we'll allow her to sneak out. Okay? So overall, the transportation budget. So overall, this section of the budget is slated to increase $461,000. That's a 5.63% increase. There are still things in this budget that are not finalized, but this is where we're at right now with the draft. In terms of the salaries, for the bus drivers, attendants, office staff, mechanics, those are all estimates at this point. We are going into negotiations with several of our bargaining units. So these are just estimates at this time. And then I will turn it over to Judy to discuss the equipment and supplies and contractual expenses.
Thank you. This year, we're looking to replace seven of our buses from 2011, the seven large gas buses. Four would have luggage compartments and three without. Those are utilized usually by the sports teams. Under equipment, we're looking to purchase for operations video camera replacements for the buses as needed. And for the garage, they would like to get a rolling access platform so the mechanics don't have to stand on the hoods of the buses. It creates a little bit of a danger, awkward situation. Two different-sized air impact wrenches and a snow blower for the sidewalks around the building. We have an old one from the schools that was replaced at that building. The gas budget increased based on current usage and pricing as fuel costs have been increasing. Contact, contract transportation costs have been increasing yearly along with the number of students that require services, so that accounts for the increase in that budget line. The current budget is not sufficient for this year, so it has to be adjusted. And if we extend the contract for the next year using the CPI rate, increase of 4.7 tax cap. We're not sure what it'll be in June, but it'll probably be significant. So the new rate would be $181.53 per student per day. And then under $53.30, $400, we checked into having the parking lot resealed and restripped. The pavement takes a bit of a beating from the 30,000-pound vehicles on them every day, and we just wanted to keep up with it instead of chasing it after it breaks down. I think that's about it.
Thanks, Judy. What we usually do is just discuss mostly the increases, and we always discuss what the equipment is and then any changes in the codes. And so Judy hit the points on all those. Does anybody have any questions with regards to the transportation budget?
All seven buses were gas? Okay.
So a couple of years ago, we started doing half diesel, half gasoline, and we were kind of just piloting the gasoline. And it's just that maintenance-wise have been more efficient and, you know, gas-wise, more economical.
They are easier maintenance. The replacement parts are definitely less expensive. With the diesel buses, you have emissions controls that can cause a problem, and with the gas buses, you do not.
Do you have both on-site?
Yes.
Yeah, we've installed, when we built the garage, both methods of fueling. Predominantly, the gasoline was just used by the other groups that use our facilities, so the police cars and, you know, some of the town highway vehicles and that kind of thing. But our use on both sets, gas and diesel, with combined use of everybody that uses them is about equal.
How, if for some reason electric becomes more prominent, do we have the capacity to put an electric charger in, especially for the smaller vehicles? Buses probably would be difficult in Western New York being electric.
When we were building the bus garage, natural gas-fueled buses were the, you know, the hot thing, and it really was going to take significant construction, different from what we would need. Just even in the garage, the vents would need to be up high as opposed to down low for, because of the, because of the gas. But we had to make a call there of whether that was a direction we wanted to go in, and the answer was no, but we would always have the ability to retrofit something. It would just take, you know, decent capital investment. With regards to the bus proposition, that is typically proposition number two on our ballot, and the voters vote on that separately. And if approved, we do have enough money in the bus purchase reserve to cover this full purchase, so it would be no tax impact. And then after that, we would have about five years of money remaining in the reserve for future bus purchases. Okay, that's good, Judy. Yeah, thank you.
Actually, the NFTA in Buffalo is going all electric. I've been in a few meetings about electrifying your garage charge. Pretty neat.
Pretty neat. The governor's proposal also included language on having school buses be zero emissions, I think by 2027 maybe. So I'm sure there'll be some things coming down the pipeline.
They're looking at having the battery charged from the top and then a moving charger goes throughout the ceiling of each bus. No, well, super neat. Let them set the precedence.
Yes, we'll be happy to copy their method once it works.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go back to the operations and maintenance budget. So overall, this budget draft has a $380,000 increase for the full buildings and grounds budget, which is 4.79%. Within this budget, the salaries are for all of the buildings and grounds departments. So from our maintenance, mechanics, and laborers, and grounds crew, to our cleaners, our custodians, messenger, or painter, the whole gamut. And as I said earlier, we are in negotiations with those bargaining units. So these are just estimates right now for the salary codes. And then I'll turn it over to Mike to discuss some of the changes.
Hi, everyone. Just wanted to take a minute to thank each and every one of you for your continued support and what's amounted to another challenging year. So I'll go through the budget codes. I'll give you a brief description of each code, as well as how the money is going to be utilized. 162200, this budget code is used for custodial equipment, such as floor machines, et cetera, and is to use to replace old equipment or to supply a building with new necessary piece of equipment. The total requested is the same as last year's budget, $22,500. 162400, this budget code is used for a refuse recycling contract, as well as the storage containers used throughout the district. I'm requesting a $22,500 increase for this code, in large part to the increased cost of the storage containers that we had to bring onsite at each school because of the storage we needed to put the classroom furniture for social distancing purposes because of COVID. So we've been having to purchase a lot of the storage containers, and they're quite costly, and we don't see them going away anytime soon either, unfortunately.
I'll speak briefly about the utilities. I'm assuming most of you will start seeing that probably at your households, that the price of natural gas and electricity is going up. We belong to an energy consortium run through Erie One BOSI's, and that includes most school districts, and school districts from across the state, actually, and local municipalities, towns, villages also participate. It allows us to purchase natural gas and electricity in bulk off of the market. It also allows us to hedge at certain price ranges. There's a consultant, you know, that's obviously an expert in those things. It's always advising us. So we actually have the meeting with that group for budgeting for 2023 later this week. So I did, was able to pry a preliminary budget estimate out of the consultant for us last week in order to put this together, but this will still be subject to change. He told me, he goes, "These are the highest rates that we've seen since 2008," and that was right before the recession too. So as we all will be experiencing in our personal lives, we are going to see some energy increases here. Mike and I have discussed some, you know, energy-saving mitigation factors, some tweaks we can do in the time being here within, throughout the winter and going into the summer also. But these are two budget codes that we used to have a significant more money in, and they were areas, as the prices became very low, we were able to, you know, reduce the budget, which is great. But now we're just at a point where it's climbing back up, so.
Then next, we have 1620460. This budget code is primarily used for vendors whose main function is to support the custodians in their buildings, such as custodial equipment repair, time clocks, et cetera. Total of this year's request, same as last year's, $14,000. 162500 is used primarily for all of our custodial and cleaning supplies. Again, same as last year, $275,000. 1621200, this code is used to facilitate the vehicle replacement plan that's been in effect since 2014, which the board has been committed to. This year, I'm planning on purchasing one Ford pickup to replace T60, which is a 2008 with over 118,000 miles. Looking to also purchase one Ford pickup to replace T62, which is a 2009 with over 70,000 miles. And lastly, looking to purchase a Ford box van with a liftgate, which will replace T64, which is a 2012 box van without a liftgate. We identified the need for another box van with a liftgate because our other truck with a liftgate is used for food service runs during the day. And not having that truck at our disposal has caused some issues when it comes to bulky deliveries. So that's the main cause of the $10,000 increase compared to last year to purchase that box van. 1621400 is used for various contractual expenses, such as the winter loader rentals, which we have at both the high school and William Street throughout the winter, uniforms for B&amp;G employees, et cetera. No increase from last year. 1621460, used for various contractual services throughout the district, such as our building management system service contract, elevator contract, generator contracts. Again, no increase from last year. 1621461 is our health and safety expense budget code. We use this for our fire alarm monitoring, fire extinguisher inspections, and any necessary upkeep of the AED machines throughout the district. The $9,000 increase requested for this budget is needed for a projected increase in AED battery replacement, as well as fire extinguisher replacement. They all have, unfortunately, kind of come to their end of life at the same time, so we've had more than anticipated to replace at one time. 1621462 is our grounds beautification budget code, $1,000 increase. That's mainly to, this summer, we're looking to go through all the playgrounds throughout the district and replace all the malts, kind of spruce up the playgrounds. So we're going to have a little bit of an anticipated increase there. And 1621500, that's our materials and supplies code for most of our main vendors that we use throughout the district, such as Granger, Home Depot, Gray Bar. No increase from last year.
You forgot to highlight the big decrease, Mike.
Well, I was leaving that one for you, Jamie.
Oh, thank you. I only reduced the budget stuff. 1621463, the special product project you see is reduced by $160,000. This year, we had to increase that code by $160,000 in order to do our building condition survey, which is required by the state once every five years. It was a one-year increase. It's this year, we've expended the money. We'll actually be getting the finalized survey within the next month or so. And then obviously, we don't need that money again next year, so.
Jamie, we were on a five-year rotation. Did we get adjusted in that process?
It used to be every school district was on the same five years. So 700 school districts were submitting a building condition survey in the same year every five years. So a couple of years ago, they decided to stagger that. So we were, this is actually year six, but this was our assigned year. They assigned everybody a new year, so they'll get like equal number each year. So in its place, last year, we had to do a visual inspection, which used to be what we did every year before the building condition survey existed. So we did that visual inspection. Mike did that with our BOSI's representative. And then this year, we did the building condition survey. And then we will be back on a five-year rotation. We also will get building aid on the cost of the building condition survey, our normal percentage for building aid. We'll get that next year for this year's expenses. So year-end, when we report all of our expenditures to the state, we'll indicate what we spent specifically on the building condition survey, and we'll see aid come through next year. So overall, this section of the budget at this point is a 4.79% increase. If you take out salaries, it's, and the utility increases, it's actually a $67,500 reduction, but then there's those other factors that are kind of out of our control at this point. Thanks, Mike.
For the record, Jill is excused for tonight. I think Mr. Davenport is trying to make his way here.
All right. The next draft section of the budget that we have for you tonight is employee benefits. So these are all the benefits that we are required to provide all of our employees, whether it be through federal or state statute or through our collective bargaining unit agreements with our employees. Most of these are very preliminary numbers, and these, especially the areas that we have estimated increases here, will definitely be shorted up before April. So right now, the state retirement system, which is for our non-instructional staff, the rate is currently, for this year, 16.2% of salaries. And their estimate, and it is just an estimate, it's not set yet, is that that's going to go down to 11.6%. So obviously, you can see there, while salaries that we've budgeted for have increased because of the big decrease in the rate, we will be budgeting much less than we did this current year. The teacher retirement system, it's also a very preliminary estimate. It is an estimate they've released, but it is not finalized, and they're estimating a slight increase, 9.8% to 10.5%, so 0.7. So the increase, the slight increase in the contribution rate, coupled with the increase in the salary budgets for the instructional staff, has a sort of budget-to-budget increase of about $600,000. Now, both of these budgets, if the rate increase was more than 2%, they would be able, the amount of money beyond the 2% would be able to be exempt from the tax cap, but that's obviously not looking like it's going to be the case. For both of these budget lines, we also have reserve funds that we can use on the revenue side of the budget to offset any changes that we do have here. So that's up to us, how much we attribute to that, and we'll look at that more. Once these numbers are finalized, we can decide what, if any, the contribution would be from the reserve fund.
Sorry I missed, I may have missed this, but the teacher retirement decrease, what was that attributed to?
The teacher retirement is an increase. The state retirement, which is not, the first line, the state retirement is a decrease. That is attributed from the contribution rate going from 16.2% to potentially 11.6%, so a really big increase in the, or decrease in the contribution rate.
Okay, and, but that's not finalized?
That is not finalized, but usually, they're pretty spot-on with their estimates. They, you know, there's a whole actuarial process. So it's usually, usually, they give us a range, like TRS, the TRS one, they told us 10 to 10.5, so I budget the 10.5. It's usually within the range or right around where they've estimated.
Thank you.
Social Security is just FICA and Medicare payroll taxes on our salaries. Workers' compensation, I think I say this every year, but four years ago, our premium was over $1 million. So we've really had some good experience. We've put some workplace safety programs in place, some injury review processes in place, and we've really improved our experience with our workers' compensation insurance provider. So we are expecting that to be a decrease. This is really a pretty finalized number at this point with our insurance company. We're expecting our unemployment and life insurance and 105 age plan expenses to remain just about the same. Our disability insurance, we will get a better number as we get closer to April, but we're expecting a 3% increase at this point. Our health insurance for our employees, we're expecting a 10% premium change. The health insurance costs have really just skyrocketed, and we're not the only ones experiencing that. It's just a market, health insurance market-wise. You know, COVID, I don't know if it's necessarily the cause of that. We track COVID expenses to our plan separately, and we're at about $1 million now to date. But, you know, offset by the people that aren't, haven't, weren't going to the doctor for, you know, having their elective surgeries canceled and all of those things. So I don't, I wouldn't say COVID is necessarily a driver here. It's prescription medications. So we are working with our consultant in our health insurance committee to look at ways that we can further mitigate costs to the plan. But at this point, we've budgeted for a 10% increase. We will have this more finalized, just right before the budget. And then dental and vision insurance, we are also expecting 5%. And then the last thing is our EAP program. Turns out, we have been paying the wrong amount for like the entire time that we've subscribed with this company for EAP services. And they were gracious enough to be understanding of that once we brought it to, when we were having discussions about it. So next year, we'll be actually just paying what we should have been paying for the last 15 years. But this year, we're still just paying what we budgeted for, so that was very kind of them. But that is for EAP programs for all of our employees, and those benefits are contractual.
So Jamie, we've saved a significant amount of money by self-insuring over the last decade or so. Obviously, 10% increase is, you know, fairly large. Do you anticipate, I realize this is difficult, especially in the time we are in, but do you anticipate this 10% being like a one-time blip?
No, we had several years that this was a 0% increase because we were within the budget, and our premiums stayed at 0%. So we've been keeping it as flat as we can and budgeting for it when it was flat. But we've just, every year, you know, we have some high-cost claimants. We have some people that are on pretty expensive specialty medications. That will be like lifetime medications. So we don't really see this as a one-time blip. So that's why we're also taking the steps to look at things within the plan that can help us mitigate some of these costs directly to the school district. So within, a lot of the reserve funds that we have fall within this section of the budget. So we have a state retirement reserve. We have the teachers' retirement reserve. We have a workers' compensation reserve. We have an unemployment insurance reserve. So on the revenue side, once we finalize these numbers, we'll make some decisions on what will go, come from the reserves to cover some or all of these costs, maybe just the increases. We'll make those decisions down the road. And then last but not least, we have the debt service budget. So in this section is all of the principal and interest payments related to our capital construction projects, past and current, and then also capital expenses related to the BOSI's project that was approved a couple of years ago by all of the boards of education through Erie One BOSI's. So 9711 is principal and interest on our permanent financing. So those are on all of the projects that have been permanently financed over the course of the 15-year spans. 9712 is the principal and interest payments on our bond anticipation notes, which is the one-year-at-a-time financing that we take on while we're doing construction, and we just borrow what we know we're going to need over the next 12 months. And then at the end, we'll permanently finance for the full amount. And then 9713 is that BOSI's debt payment. So as you could see, this year's payment to next year's payment is $100,000 less. And then 2324 will be that last payment for the BOSI's project, and that'll all come off. So a slight increase in this area of $67,000 between the building aid that we receive from New York State on these construction projects and our debt service reserve. That really covers the entire expenditure side of these costs. Any questions on any of these expenditure budgets? So we, last, I think it was Wednesday, the governor had a press conference and released some state aid information. And Mike keeps laughing because he'll never let me live down the quote, but like, there's not, what was it? There's nothing anyone can be...
There's nothing to be mad about this budget.
First time in my career I've ever said that, and hopefully not the last time, but definitely, definitely surprising. So this is a, the governor proposed a $200, $2.07 billion increase to school aid, which is 71%, 1.6 billion of that would be... 1.6 billion of that would be in foundation aid. So in the 2122 finalized budget, they had indicated that there'd be efforts to fully fund the foundation aid formula for all school districts between the next two years, so 2223 and 2324. In comes the governor's budget, and she, that actually is coming to fruition based on what her budget proposal is. So most of the associations that we rely on to kind of like unpack these proposals and give us more information are still working on that. NISP just released theirs. I have a webinar on Friday with ASBO New York to talk through more of the proposals. But it's actually, there's not a lot to unpack. It's going to be one of those years that normally, the governor's proposal comes out, everyone lobbies and advocates, and, you know, then the final budget from the legislature usually brings us more money. I'm not really, I don't really think that's going to be a thing this year. I don't think we're going to see more money beyond this, because this is an epic amount of money being put towards aid to education. I think what we probably will see is an effort to have some language changes, laws, you know, rules, you know, things that maybe have gone by the wayside in the past by trying to have more money allocated to education. I think we'll see that those become the focus this year. So...
Jamie?
Yes.
So let's put a little context to your quote, though. Don't make me, don't let me make up numbers, but I think that we're down still about $140 million had that foundation formula been fully funded, correct?
$134 million.
Right. So for years and years and years, the governor would put it in different areas and everything else, and we would say, we being superintendent's business officials and the school boards, would advocate and say, can you just put it on the foundation aid form? And by doing that, though, that's really made a big impact. So again, this is a great step in the right direction, we believe, and if it comes to fruition, we do it another, next year, again, we will be in a lot better shape. So I think those maybe political games are years and years of that kind of sort of consternation and not knowing what was going on, not knowing what was going to be created. Everyone here remembers the gap elimination form, you know, Adjustment Act and all that kind of stuff, so it's a step in the right direction. Your comments, Jamie?
Yeah, this is the largest increase in foundation aid Lancaster has ever seen, and probably, well, I don't want to say most districts. So the foundation aid formula was enacted in 2007, and it has never been funded according to the formula. So shortly after that, became the DRA, then the GEA, and we've seen all of those reductions. So last year was our third-largest increase. This year is our number-one largest increase in the history of the foundation aid formula. For this current school year, we are 80% funded on that formula. That is low compared to most school districts. We actually, I think we presented it to you last year. We had BOSI's do an analysis to try to figure out why we were where we were, to find similar school districts in various, you know, student counts, rural, suburban, you know, tried to figure out why we sat at that 80% when most districts were much higher, and there was no explanation. We did not, there were no similar-suited districts within the state that were in the same position as us. So as of this year, compared to our formula, we are about just over $6 million underfunded. But the proposal for next year is a $3.1 million increase in foundation aid, so that's half of the difference between our fully funded and what we're getting. And then the commitment is that the remaining 10% is then provided in the following year. So we'll be at 90 after 2223, if this is the budget that's approved by New York State, and then we'll be at 100% at the end of 2324. 100% of the formula, the actual formula. Yeah, so all in all, up to this year, there is $134 million that this district has not gotten out of that, out of that formula. But we are not alone in that. But ours is a large amount, but that's a, that's a 16-year history. So year 17 of this formula that they created to create equity in school aid will be the first year that is actually funded according to the formula. And I don't think we'll ever see that $134 million, but we can be very thankful that we, at least moving forward, will finally be, you know, funded according to the actual formula. All right, so in a nutshell, I give you this every year, here's the state aid proposal. The top section is our current-year actual aid. We take out that universal pre-K money, because that is accounted for in the federal fund, it's not part of this budget. So overall, our actual is $41,758,854. That is about $70,000 more than we budgeted for, so that budget was pretty spot-on, the budget we finalized. And then, just like every year, there are things that I recalculate in the proposal, because I know that they're not going to come to fruition. So being $70,000 off this year, I think, shows like we definitely know a little bit better than the proposals usually do. So you see the $3.1 million in additional foundation aid, all of our expenditure-based aids, there's no proposed changes to those. Our transportation aid is significantly overstated, I would say by almost $2 million. And then our building aid, I still need to confirm, I do believe it may be more, but we have to wait for the state to send us like a packet of aid runs, and then I can double-check all of the building projects, we've submitted final cost reports, and just make sure everything's accounted for. Very likely, this doesn't account for our building condition survey, so the aid that we're going to receive on that is not included in this. So we'll make some of those adjustments as we see what data they've used to come up with these numbers. So overall, we're expecting the total, based on the governor's proposal, to be 44, well, just under $45 million. That's a $3.2 million increase over our actual aid that we're receiving this year. And when I look at budget-to-budget, I'm expecting to be able to increase the budget, the revenue budget on the state aid side by $3.3 million, which is just about 8%. So beyond, I can't find my right, my post-it. So beyond the foundation aid phase, and I know, you know, past governors were attacking BOSI's aid, excess cost aid, all of our expenditure-based aids, transportation aid, they wanted, you know, sometimes they wanted to limit the increases, sometimes they wanted to lump them all together. They're, they are all intact, and as they stand, and as their formulas read, the proposal included aid forgiveness, which sometimes there are districts who maybe didn't file a transportation contract on time, or didn't get final cost reports on, in time, and according to the law, they lose the aid on those things. So typically, there's representatives of those schools, you know, advocate for single bills to give them forgiveness, but she has aid forgiveness just in general as a proposal. I mentioned the zero emission buses, she also included language about temporary waivers for earnings for retirees, and temporary allowing teachers who are not permanently certified yet to be able to work in a, you know, in a teaching capacity, and those are to address the, you know, the substitute and staffing shortages that all the school districts are experiencing. So, and then there's also, Mike, you can get your spreadsheet ready, part of the proposal is a homeowner tax rebate that will be similar to the one that there was in place from 2016 to 2019. So if you are, if you have star or enhanced star on your property, then you would see a rebate, but I think they factor that into your personal income tax refund, but that's also on the table, too.
That's the New York State personal income tax?
Yes.
That's interesting.
That is interesting, yeah. But similar rebate, that it's still, you'd still have the star rebate on your household, but then the homeowner tax rebate, is what they've called it, will provide an additional rebate in some manner. So we will know more about just what this budget entails within the next week, as we start to hear from our associations, who are, you know, experts at kind of dissecting these things and letting us know how schools are impacted. And then I don't foresee it being a tough negotiating year with the governor and the legislature, so I would anticipate probably an on-time state budget at the end of March, and we would be ready to finalize, you know, present the final state aid budget at our April work session. I think that's it.
So I mean, that's really great news with the foundation formula. I think you're probably right, we, in the years to come, need to still advocate for, you know, making sure those formulas are, you know, more accurately represented, especially for Lancaster and for any other districts that are, you know, lower than they should be.
I think an important point on where is this money coming from, I don't know exactly where it's coming from, but we had a discussion about whether these big hikes were being covered by federal stimulus money, or anything related to COVID, or anything that was going to run out. And the answer is no. So I did see that there was a proposal for more casinos to be able to open, so maybe that is, we'll be funding these aid changes, but it is not something right now that we could anticipate is only going to be a one- or two-year thing, and then we're going to see a gap elimination adjustment or anything again. Not saying that that can't happen, but they are not basing these increases based on like one-time revenue sources, so that's good. So that's all I have for you tonight. Any questions before we go? All right, our next work session will be February 28th at 6:30, location TBD, I think. And then we have a board meeting in a couple of weeks, February 7th.
Thank you so much. Onto 5.0, adjournment, we have nothing else tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Good night, everyone.